I just want to let you know that I have gone live.
Yeah.
Just over live. Just seen over live. That's, that's the. Mr. Perkins, how are you?
Oh, if I ran, you'd better be.
What's the vote? There you go.
I said my first, look at the basic thing. No, no, this is, it's what's polite. I said go where, so I guess some of it. Okay, somebody, somebody said that. Go where. Do you mind?
It's about road trips this week. The popcorn.
I call to order the Board of Trustees regular meeting for October 3, 2023, and the time is now six p.m. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give the invocation?
Fire your hands. Laura, thank you for this beautiful day in the council, and thank you for allowing all these residents to come here. And thank you for the, uh, I guess the prosperity we share, or the freedoms that we have here, that you've given all this to us. I pray that you would be those who are, like a safe, who can tend us from taking this away and that you would be with our families as a listener. They know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call please, Mrs. Barry.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. McKee.
Here. I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Same.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes. I move to adopt the minutes from the September 19, 2023 meeting as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes. Okay, we'll go ahead and move over to public comments. Please limit your public comments to three minutes, uh, per person. Uh, please talk to the podium, state your first, last name and your address for the record.
Steve Perkins, 7352 Palmer. Um, I was delighted to hear some, at least rumblings of Robert's rules order in the last meeting. Uh, unfortunately, it did not come from our board, but actually, uh, from our administrator, but I still appreciate it nonetheless in regards to minutes. Um, but today I would like to speak about the quorum and debate, uh, the following is directly from Robert's rules. Uh, 4320, states confining remarks to the merits of the pending motion, and debated members' remarks must feature names of the question before the assembly. That is, the statements must have bearing on whether the immediately pending motion should be adopted. 4321, refraining from attacking a member's motives. When a question is pending, a member can condemn or denigrate or likely consequences of a proposed measure in strong terms, but he must avoid personalities and under no circumstances can he attack or question the motives of another member. Measure, not the member, is the subject of debate. If a member disagrees with a statement by another in regard to an event that both witnessed, he cannot state in debating the other's statement as false, but might say, I believe there is strong evidence that the member is mistaken. The moment the chair hears words such as fraud, liar, or lie used about a member in debate, he must act immediately and decisively to correct the matter to prevent its repetition. There's several others to, uh, to talk about, but I would like to switch over to how those are practically handled in a public meeting. It's called calling a point of work. Whenever those things happen, any member of the board can call for a point of work, and the chair should recognize that member and say, state your point of work. At that time, if it's a matter of decorum, any member of the board can say, decorum. At that point, the chair rules on whether there was a violation of decorum and sets the course of action from there. If the member is unhappy with that ruling, they can ru- appeal the ruling of the chair and it will be put to a vote. If the chair is the one that is the offender, then, once again, the chair can be sanctioned by a vote of the other members of the board. So, the bottom line is, is these things are what go into making a proper meeting run properly, and it's sadly short supply. And in the last meeting, I could find all three members in evidence at timestamps, et cetera, of every member of this board violating the rules of decorum under Robert's rules. I wanted to stop, and I would, I urge you to, not only, I knew you all had a copy of Robert's rules because I've seen them all. I urge you once again to read them, and I don't want somebody to hold them up as a prop.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Seering, if anyone else would like to come up to the podium and state your first and last name and your address for the record.
I command the chair, Gary Burkeholder, 254 Trail East, Etna. Uh, both as a candidate and a trustee and a resident, but I've been asking for months, how are we going to pay for the right waggon sewer plant? And as I stated at a previous meeting, the cost has ballooned from 25 million to 84 million. And I continue to go to water and sewer meetings and ask that same question, and I get general answers. But I'd like to enter into the record to be attached to the minutes, the July 28, 2023 New York Avenue article, Southwest Licking Water Sewer District planning on $70 million Etna wastewater treatment plant. And then it says, but the district doesn't yet have a plan to pay for it. And of course, now it's gone up to 84 million. In this article, the Etna representative talks about two options, tax increment financing, which is a, uh, economic incentive, and that takes and diverts monies, future property taxes from the schools and from the township, and from any other entity receiving those future property taxes, and diverts it to infrastructure. And the Water and Sewer Board has asked that 100% of those future revenues be directed to the district to pay for the waggon plant until it is fully paid for. The second option is capital recovery fees, or capacity fees that will be paid upfront by the developers to pay for the plant. Uh, but it's quoted in that article, and I urge everyone to take a look at that article, and I'm going to submit it to the fiscal officer for part of the minutes, that that would slow down development. The developers don't want to pay those capacity fees because it would add to the cost of development. So, I would like to hear where the board stands on that, and I think that is the best policy with rising cost of living costs, as well as now the increase in our property valuations. I think it's a bad policy to try to fund the future sewer plant with a TIF when it should be capital recovery fees or capacity fees that the developer will pay up, pay upfront for that development. Thank you.
Jockenard, 10785 Palmer Road. This is to, uh, Mark Evans, uh, better known as Mr. Transparant. I need you to, you know, I, I oppose this personal camera his he has here, started back when he was running for trustee. He records this and then posts it on his personal Facebook to belittle the residents in the area. We've got it videoed now by the township, so that's kind of the official record. But we still have to put up with this camera behind me here. And this is to tell you to stop posting my picture on your Facebook page. You do not have my permission, and it's not legal for you, what you're doing, posting my picture on your, on your Facebook. I, uh, I guess it's nice to be popular, but, uh, you don't need to use my picture anymore.
Can you be clear about which picture that is?
There is, um, I think there's a, um, department in the town, over in Licking County, that I can report me to Ethics or whatever, so if you want us to go that far, we can do that. You need to stop harassing the residents of the township. Just because we're appointed to a committee, for some reason or another, if you don't have the approval or the say in it, we are all worthless. I got put on the jet committee. That is a non-paying voluntary position. But you would think he thought I robbed the bank. When they first put me on it as a temporary person, he kind of blew up in the meeting. Oh, I can't believe you put him on there. I interviewed for a zoning, uh, position. He was a president then. You know, when you go and interview for a job or position, it's just not the person who's being interviewed. I'm interviewing the guy that's good doing it. He was very unprofessional, not, not, uh, prepared for the interview. He does not like me. He's biased against me. And it doesn't matter if you get put on a position, and we're going to vote and see if you get it or not. If he's not for it, he's against you. And, you know, I'm, I'm a 65-year resident in this area, a landowner, pay my bills, live a good life. And I don't think, you know, when somebody volunteers for a position that is a non-paying volunteering job, that you should be belittled on Facebook for it. He cannot move forward until he stops living in the past. He obs- he's obsessed with Carlisle. Whether you voted for him, you didn't vote for him, you like him, you don't like him, he is obsessed.
Good for you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Judy Cackmeyer, 29 Roman Court. Last Monday, September 25th, 2023, a special BCA meeting was held. What is very interesting about this meeting is that one particular issue was presented that affected some 200 residents of Royal Lakers and Royal Oak subdivisions. Tollot LLC was seeking approval for an impound block directly across from the subdivisions. Thankfully, the two adjacent properties on Imperial Road got to work after receiving a notice of the proposed conditional use request and informed the entire neighborhood. This was all done less than a week before the scheduled BCA meeting. It was a heroic undertaking, which brings me to question, this property was sold in May, and this special meeting was known prior to the trustee meeting on September 19th, and yet was not mentioned in the administrator's report. Why? Setting trick and, setting trick or treat night was an important item, but a proposed impound lot across from a residential neighborhood received nothing. There are certainly some messed up priorities here in Etna Township. Thankfully, the BCA turned down the request. However, we know that never really doesn't mean never. It actually means later, under other circumstances. And in fact, the owners of that two-acre property are already creating their own version of an impound lot. Within the last week, they have moved four large cardo containers onto the lot, and I'm sure that's just the beginning. I expect more coming. Yes, they'll have their own junkyard one way or another. And last Thursday, the county commissioners approved the resolution brought forward by Liberty Township to prohibit large and community solar, and are proceeding forward with a public meeting on November 8th at 6:00 p.m. And by the way, that three-member board had only two members present. This regular meeting wasn't canceled, and they conducted business and paid bills because they had a quorum. And as a reminder, Hartford Township and Knox County residents opposed to large solar facilities will speak at the next COCO meeting on October 19th at the Trout Club. And then perhaps we here in Etna Township can revisit this issue in the future. Thanks.
Again, Etna Township and Liberty are two different townships.
Yes, they certainly are.
Thank you.
That was a profound statement.
Point of order, are we allowed to make comments as a board?
I just, yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Hi, Sarah Ferguson, 43, Ballman Road. Um, I've mentioned this before, but, you know, I'll mention it again. Um, I really don't feel welcome in a small business in Etna. I would love to, you know, have an office in the community that I live. There is, you know, I feel like big corporations are given, um, special treatment, but small business, um, kind of goes by the wayside. So, I've been looking for an office to rent again, and there's nothing. I mean, there's absolutely nothing in Etna Township where I can put money back into the community that I live. Um, you know, I, I, I can't afford to buy a building yet just because, you know, I'm, I'm a small business. I just started two years ago. And that is just kind of one of the something I'm with around there is, you know, support small businesses. Let's, let's bring that to the forefront of the community.
Thank you.
I agree, we should support that.
Are you going to pass it up right now?
No, I had to go around first.
Ryan Davis, 8807, Walkings Road. I grew up in Southern Ohio, really small area. I've been in Etna for about five years, I've been coming to meetings for about four. I really like it, but I don't like where we're at today. And I think people have been asking me when I found out, talking about running for trustee, finding out about me, finding out about why I want to run. I think it's real important to know that a lot of people I'm talking to are just disappointed. This is not what we voted for. I don't know if anyone can come in and wave the magic wand, but I know that I can sit there and I can work with anyone. I've been on teams. I played football in college. I've been a captain of my high school. We have, while they're small, I was leader of a team. I think it's going to take somebody that's not always won, knows how to compromise. I, I've got four daughters, 14, 6, 3, and 2. Every time I tell them I'm coming to a meeting, they want to come with me, if they only knew how much fun this was. Um, it's really important that the township gets the reset in January, regardless of what happens. I would like to be that engine of change and help Etna set a new standard going forward. People are proud to be here, and we are out of the negative news on the front page of New York Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Zachar, Cumberland Trails. I, uh, I'm really concerned about all of the emails that I've seen with your name on Mark Evans, about our commissioners and about other people. I'm also concerned why you support Gary, who goes over and pulls an address to see if he has a fence. Then he gets paperwork on it. These people just moved in in July. Those are the things that we have a problem as residents, and we have lots of residents who have lots of problems with that. You may not be aware of it because you're not here, but we have a problem with someone who wants to go out there, not a, not a representative of this township, not somebody who's out there looking for the community to work together, but pulling a permit to see if they paid for a fence. And then talking about deed restrictions and things like that. There's no HOA anymore in our township. Why do you condone that? The same thing that I talk about with the attacks and the things like that in our township, okay, and this is our township. This is where we're at. I hold you accountable, but you bring him with you. That's unacceptable. We don't appreciate that. The things that you've been putting on Facebook or sending it out, it's disgusting. The video, where is that video? Why do we have to ask other people to give it to us? You said you were, I stood up here and asked you, you said you were a victim. And you were assaulted. I saw the video, sir. I understand why you're not playing it, but you should. It's really bad. I mean, really. This is what you're promoting. That, that's unacceptable. You shouldn't promote it. You should stop right now. I mean, think about it. It's really bad for us.
Thank you. Is there any other residents that would like to come up to the podium?
Madam President?
Yes.
There was a resident who sent in a written statement because he could not be here this evening. Do you want to address?
Please, if you would.
I can.
Are we going to accept this ongoing? Madam President?
Again, Mr. Evans, it looks like a resident sent something, and according to the administrator, and they couldn't be here.
No, so the public is aware that they can do this?
Well, I've seen it happen in other meetings, so I don't think there's a problem with that.
This is a written statement of Peter F. Bush, 103 Arrowwood Court.
Where's that? I'm sorry, 103?
Oh, I'm sorry, 103 Arrowwood Court. I don't know, Mr. Bush. I don't know where he lives. I'm just, that's the name handles on this statement that he has signed. "In 2003, we purchased land to build a house from Deani Homes. On our building plans, we had Deani put a fence on the side and back of our home. In May 2004, we took possession. We then constructed a fence to match the golf course fence." Parenthesis, split rail. "A neighbor found fault with my fence. Neil Engel," parentheses, now deceased, "took my fence to Etna Township. We had the first meeting, and nothing was decided. The second meeting, I presented my case that the fence was see-through, that it was installed the proper length from the middle of Columbia Road and Trail East. Trustees told my wife and I to seek a variance, cost of $400. Now Burkeholder appears. After the second meeting, Burkeholder came over to my wife and I and introduced himself. We talked about my fence and that I should pay for the variance, and he would get it through the committee. I paid for the variance that night. We went home. Just after we arrived home, the telephone rang. I answered. The caller said he was the head of the variance committee. He told me to get my variance money back from Etna Township because Burkeholder told him to absolutely vote it down. Burkeholder told me one thing and then turned it around to fail. Burkeholder has two faces. He will tell one person one thing and turn around, tell the opposite to someone else. Please do not put him back in office because he wants to control Etna Township property and the people who live here." And it's signed Peter F. Bush.
Ms. Danson, I'd like to know when this came in because a resident knew about this before the board. It seems like there's some coordination.
I, I don't have any, it was handed to me this evening. I had no other information about it.
Greg Zachar, 79, Trail East. I have a question for you, Mark. It's on my phone. It says, first day Mr. Burkeholder gets elected. Laura, you're fired. John, you're fired. They're going to wait 90 days. Nita, you're fired. And I'm sorry that you have to deal with that. I have that as a text message. That's a shame, because Laura, you're the glue that keeps this place together. Mr. Singleton, you're doing an outstanding job. Nita, you're fairly new. You've been great. But I want to know, their plan, he doesn't want to be, uh, trustee. His goal is to get your job.
That's right.
Your job.
That's right.
But he needs him to get into this position.
That's exactly right.
Get rid of Ross in two years, get their person in. He takes over the administration council. That's what he's about. And I've got it on the phone. Anybody would like to see it? Thank you.
It's not even possible.
I got it for the.
They fight corruption and they just want to keep power.
Yep.
Proof.
Is there any other public comments tonight? Sir?
Hi, Trent Stett, 319 Trail East. I just wanted to, uh, thank the Board of Trustees once again for, for all the work that they do. I was the only trustee candidate who wasn't going to have a public comment because I'm going to speak at some point during the meeting when invited to do so. But with me, I, I've been reading a lot of crap about myself, um, learning things that I didn't know about me and things I said and people I talked to, um, online. It's kind of fun. May write a book about it someday because it really is entertaining. Makes my wife upset. She cries about it. It, it's kind of unfortunate, but I did bring my brother with me today. He's here from Finland, the country. My daughter, Samantha. My daughter Samantha, she's here, she was thrown up in our home at the township, her entire life was born in the township. Her best friend Rachel, who I held on the day that she was born. These are people that have known me twenty-one years, fifty years. In any event, if you want to know about me, if you want to hear the real things about me, if you're here in this meeting or want to come to my home and sit and have a meal across the dinner table from me, I'd like to do that. I'd be happy to do that and let these people talk to you about who I am, who their dad is, who their brother is, who their husband is. You don't have to believe what you read on Facebook. You don't have to believe what you read on a website. You don't have to believe what you read on my website. Come ask questions, come learn about who I am. If you don't like it, don't vote for me. It's pretty much that simple. I'm okay with that. And I've been here a long time, planned to be here a long time, not voting anywhere, but I appreciate the work that this board does and hope I get to join it some more.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments tonight, anybody? One once, one twice? Oh, good, that's somebody.
Steve Slade, thirteen seventy-two, Luntindale Parkway. So I'll just set a few records straight. I have the video. I have it with me tonight. So if anybody wants to see the body cam video of Mr. Evans, I have it. As far as the, what's that?
Speak up, Mark.
I'm speaking. So again, that wasn't her. I have the video, the body cam video that Mr. Evans isn't sharing with anybody. I have it right here on my phone if anybody wants to see it. Mr. Davis has a prominent role in that video. It's amazing the things that were done on that video when nobody was in room and it was just Mr. Davis and Mr. Evans, ransacking Mrs. Brown's desk, taking pictures of stuff on her desk, reading files on her desk, reading emails on her computer. That's all on body cam. And I will address one thing about a recent article put on Facebook by candidate Perkins talking about the high school activity and everything going on in that. I'll just remind him about his involvement two years ago behind Crooked Carlisle's signs.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments tonight? Okay, I'll go ahead and move over to the reports. Looks like I'm going to turn the meeting over to the Southwest Licking Water and Sewer District for that day for the wagon facility. Would you like to come up to the podium?
All right, again, Trent Step, three nineteen Trail East. As the appointee to the Water and Sewer District, I've been asked politely to provide an update and to provide some answers and some information that people have been asking about. I believe the proper way to do that is to come here and do that in person.
Thank you very much.
I'd be, I'd be pleased to follow that up in writing. But first of all, I did come to a prior meeting and I did make an announcement that Jim Roberts was our selection as our new executive director. I did mention at that time, it was a truth then, it's still a truth now, part of my reasoning for needing to be reappointed in an early fashion was to complete the interview process and to make sure that we hired a quality executive director. With the tenures of the others on the board being very limited, the question I was asked most often is what is Etna going to do in November? I couldn't answer that question. This board answered that question, I appreciate that. You can talk to Mr. Roberts about whether that made an impact or not. I want to turn this over to him in a moment, but I did want to read, we did issue a press release and I'm not sure that everybody saw it or heard it. I'm going to read that press release, it came from the district. Licking County, Ohio, Southwest Licking Community Water and Sewer District has announced that the Board of Trustees has hired Jim Roberts as executive director. Mr. Roberts will begin on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. He's here in volunteer capacity tonight, I appreciate that. Mr. Roberts has nearly forty years of engineering experience with nearly thirty of those years as the principal of successful engineering roles. Most recently, Mr. Roberts was a senior consultant at Verdantis and prior to its acquisition by Verdantis, he was the president of Jobs Henderson and Associates. Mr. Roberts brings decades of local leadership experience. He is actively involved in the Chamber of Commerce Rotary for Licking County. Mr. Roberts also has been a dedicated public servant for more than a decade. He's served on the Heath School Board, the Licking County Planning Commission, and is currently serving on the Heath City Council. And along with the Ohio State University, Mr. Roberts is the recipient of the Alumni Association's twenty seventeen Robert M. Duncan Alumni Citizenship Award, which is presented to alumni who have distinguished themselves in service to humanity and who have best exemplified the university's motto, education for citizenship. Jim Roberts is the board's choice to serve as our executive director. He's well-furished in the skills. We were looking forward to lead the district during these extremely challenging times. He will be expected to seek mutually beneficial relationships with our neighbors while protecting our current customers, said Larry Cressman, president of the Board of Trustees. Jim has a long history of building relationships in Licking County. I believe his expertise and fresh perspective are exactly what Southwest Licking Community Water and Sewer District needs to guide us through the anticipated growth of the region, said trustee Melissa Carter. The board is excited to welcome Jim to the district. He's a proven leader with strong regional relationships, which will be instrumental in moving the collaborative Southwest Licking Community Water and Sewer District forward. The district is an integral part of the delivery of critical infrastructure needs in western Licking County and under Jim's leadership will employ the regional solutions necessary to fulfill the future water and wastewater needs. He will seek to build new partnerships with our neighbors and will ensure that we continue to provide clean, reliable, and economical service to our existing customers, said trustee Trent Step. I'm excited to take this position and help move the district forward in these exciting and unprecedented times in Licking County. I hope the relationships I have built with an entire career in Licking County can be beneficial in helping move the county forward in a collaborative manner. The district is in a great place as we sit today and working with the board and staff to determine how to best move forward with the best interests of the current and future users will be both challenging and rewarding, said Jim Roberts. The executive director position was created by the Board of Trustees in June. The executive director position replaces the general manager position, which has been vacant for four years. CJ Gilcher has served as the interim general manager during this period and will become the operations director overseeing the day-to-day operations of the water and wastewater systems. For the past four years, our staff has been patient with the process and supportive of Mr. Gilcher and we are now ready for the next phase of our development within our territories to move forward under Jim's leadership, said Mr. Cressman. We are blessed to have so many exceptional candidates interested in the opportunity to lead the district in the future. The excitement we are seeing is a testament to the unprecedented opportunities for growth in the region and our unparalleled reputation as a regional leader for water and sewer, said Mr. Step. That was the press release. Jim, I didn't know if you wanted to come up and introduce yourself so people could understand who you are, what you look like, recognize you. I know you're here on a voluntary basis, so say what you want to say and keep it in slower order. Sorry.
Well, thank you very much. Again, I am Jim Roberts. I'm excited to be the new executive director of Southwest Licking Community Sewer Water District. It is unprecedented times in Licking County, it's unprecedented times in Etna. And I look forward to working with everybody in a cooperative and collaborative manner to try to move the district forward. I think that the press release says a lot of really good things and I think the most important one is that we want to be respectful of our current user base as we try to grow and expand the district as well. I appreciate Mr. Step being one of the board members that's supported me for this position. I am a lifelong Licking County resident, I'm a Heath person. I did serve twenty years on Heath School Board, so I've been an elected official. I understand the challenges that come with that. So I'm just really excited about this opportunity, understanding the challenge that comes with it. Every opportunity is full of challenges as well. So again, anything I can do to help anybody along the way, be informative or whatever, I'm looking forward to that. So thank you very much.
Thank you too.
Thanks, Jim. I appreciate that. Now, the reason that folks, I believe, wanted me to be here and bring some information to the board is the Lagrum facility. There's rumblings, I guess, that the district should have, could have moved faster on this project for a number of reasons I disagree. If we would have designed and built the project immediately after the land was purchased, we would have designed it to be too small. We would have started construction prior to the intel announcement potentially and we'd be looking at another new facility to plan, to buy property for, and construct right now. So by happenstance, more than anything in the timeline I'll get into here, I definitely can't take credit for some of the delays, but the delays have actually likely long-term decreased the overall costs. At best, we probably could have saved six months. And six months is pretty much the duration of the bat season here in Ohio. So that six months really wouldn't have done anything other than potentially allow us to clear some trees in the spring as opposed to clearing trees in the fall. So we'd likely be waiting until October for any construction of substance to begin. Since we started this process, we've been very strategic, we've been very methodical, and the intent has been to start construction this fall. And it looks like we're on track or very close to do that. From a timeline standpoint, in September, October timeframe of two thousand and nineteen, the Lagrum property was purchased. This was before my time on board, certainly. My understanding from those close to the process was that there was a bit of a hurry to close on that property. The timing was such that one of the trustees on the board of Water and Sewer District Board was about, their term was about to expire. They wanted to have something in place prior to the expiration. There's lawsuit history, all kinds of depositions involved in that land purchase as well as in the transactional processes that took place in two thousand and nineteen. The design, the preliminary design and initial study to determine where, when, how, what we should build as a district, said that we should build a one point five million gallon per day facility. That was when people talk about the twenty million dollar cost. That was a twenty million dollar estimate and that was probably eight years ago now that that estimate happened. So obviously some things have changed during that timeframe. March two thousand and twenty, just shortly after the September two thousand and nineteen timeframe was, as you probably all remember, the onset of Little Pay Day. Things changed. Our staff was cut in half. Not cut in half because we lost half of our staff, but because we couldn't afford to lose half of our staff, we split our staff in half and half the staff worked for a week. Then they went home the next week, the other staff came in and worked because that way if somebody contracted COVID, as you might remember, there was a multi-week quarantine that was required with any exposure and we needed to provide service to community. And so we were understaffed by half through the time that essentially the lockdowns occurred. I was appointed to the board in December of two thousand and twenty. There was already a lawsuit in place and we were meeting remotely at that time or we were being isolated away from the general public and staff until July of two thousand and twenty-one with limited access to staff and limited access to information. I apologize on my VOR so I don't start coughing. College season is here.
Yes.
In September two thousand and twenty-one, from the minutes of our, I think it was the thirtieth of September meeting, I stated in the minutes, I'm reading from them now, Mr. Step stated he stands firm that he does not want existing customers to have increased costs due to future development. That has been repeated many times. Mr. Step stated that he sent correspondence to the Etna Township trustees that expressed an interest in cooperative financing. He stated that he would love cooperative posture from Etna Township with the district and I still would. And just as an aside, Mr. Step stated that when talking about renovation of the administration facility, a discussion should include various technologies such as archiving, video streaming, et cetera, that helps the staff and the residents in the future. Some promises, I guess, that I haven't held up, at least to this point, there's been some other projects that have taken precedence. The township, the projects here in the township represent a very large percentage of the projects in the need for expansion of the Water and Sewer District. Beyond the original one point five MGD design criteria, a collaborative approach between the district and the township has always been preferred because the township will obviously receive quite a financial benefit from the development that is coming. The board recommended a design for a two point zero MGD or two billion gallon a day facility, increased by a half a million gallons per day in April two thousand and twenty-two. That was started with AECom as the design engineering firm. The contract has been amended twice since, construction administration, which included an increase to two point five MGD to accommodate for post-intel development. So we went from one point five to two point oh to two point five through the course of the design process just because of the demands that continued to sort of ramp up in the area. Total phosphorus and nitrogen limits have now been imposed by the Ohio EPA. That's been within the last thirty days and they will not issue a permit to install unless we agree to adhere to those permit limitations, which are not published limitations at the moment. Those are being imposed on the watershed that we are building on. So it is site-specific and it is a requirement, again, that has just happened and imposed by the Ohio EPA. At thirty percent design, in September of two thousand and twenty-two, we contracted with SHUK as a C Mar contractor, a C Mar as a construction manager at risk. We did that knowing that costs would increase, but we also did that knowing that the timeline would contract. So in order to get the capacity online faster, we recognized that the way to do that was to use the C Mar process and that that process is holding true to being, to expediting the construction process, but there is an additional cost in that because somebody else is at risk with a guaranteed maximum price and knowing that their estimates are likely to be a little more conservative to make sure that they don't lose money on the project. The, this includes them in the design process, so like I said, thirty percent, they now are involved in the design process. They're coming to the design review meetings, they're having input into the design process, they're spending time, they're spending money, they're spending resources, they're adding cost to the project. Normally that happens from the engineering company's perspective only, but in the C Mar approach, their close collaboration through the process will allow us to get the capacity again online faster because they're actually participating in the process. It also guarantees us a time slot in the contractor's schedule. If anybody's trying to build anything right now in Licking County, my guess is you're probably struggling to get time slots for contractors. There was also a chrome drive issue for access off of Humphries. And then again, the permit to install have, the EPA's permit to install has caused some minor delays and slowdowns, as has working with Licking County Planning and the Licking County Engineers Office. My guess is if there's any developers in the audience today, they'll relate to that process being a little slow in Licking County. We have to adhere to those regulations as well. The Ohio EPA appears to be reacting to pressures from the current administration and Washington's US EPA's implementation of Green New Deal policies. That's what these nitrogen and phosphorus levels are likely. At least that's the impression we have and the reaction to that by the Ohio EPA. Seems to be somewhat in conflict with what we're seeing from the Dwight Houston administration in Ohio, who are development friendly. So we're hoping we can still potentially get some relief on that, but at this point that's what the permit to install were required. So looking at cost, that's the timeline, that's what has slowed us down. Those are the things that we've been involved in over the course of time as this project has worked through its process. Cost escalation, like I said, the original study indicated a plus or minus twenty million dollar, one MGD or one point five MGD million gallons per day capacity, and that was without land. So that didn't include the purchase of land. Land was purchased in a hurry, due diligence was minimal. By that, a phase one environmental assessment. By that, a phase one environmental assessment did not show any wetlands on the property. When we actually brought the engineers up in sight, we ended up, it ended up costing us about $900,000 in wetlands mitigation. That went on top of the cost of the property cost, purchase the property. Because of the wetlands and because of the foundations required to build the new facility, a lot of stone has to be added to the ground in order for the foundation, the reliability of the foundations because of the full shorts. So that adds cost to everything that we're working on as well. When increased capacity went to 2 MGD, our estimated cost went to 40 plus or minus million.
What, what did you say? What, that went to 40 million?
So we went, we went from 1.5 MGD to 2.0 MGD. As a step change, half a million gallons per day. That was pre-intel announcement. That was essentially to accommodate what we saw happening in the Lincoln County Planning Office from the development. A couple of the past corporate park properties, but primarily at the township subdivisions and truly the High Point project is a significant project from a usage and capacity standpoint that's projected here in the township. When the increased capacity went from 2 million or went from 1.5 million to 2 million, our cost projections went to 40 million. These were being shared during our meetings as updates from our interim general manager. When we increased the capacity from 2.0 to 2.5, we had an estimate of 50 million at that point in time, but the guaranteed maximum price came in over 60 million. So we began value engineering. We began taking things out of the project to try to conserve and save costs, to try to get it down to that 50 million price, which we still thought was extreme at that point in time. Right now, just to put this in perspective, it costs about $225 a yard for bulk concrete. When the first study was conducted, it was about 120 per yard. Supply chain inflation because of supply and demand have totally kind of wrecked the cost structure of equipment as well as the timetables for having equipment delivered. And then of course, intel construction has placed a competition in the market for labor and material supply and demand has really caused some challenges there as most folks doing construction projects probably recognize. And like I said, the Ohio EPA regulations imposing total phosphorus, total nitrogen limits were added in the last 30 days as part of the permitting process. That may not sound like a lot. You have to control your phosphorus. You have to control your nitrogen to a certain level. That caused, that caused us to add another building to the design. Multiple filters and a chemical processing process to all the equipment plus the chemicals that were estimated to be part of a future upgrade, knowing that at some point in time, the EPA was likely going to go in that direction. So we allocated the space for that in our design, but we didn't allocate the equipment for that in our design. Adding that was added 15 million to the cost. So the 15 million was added in the last 30 days by the Ohio EPA. So knowing that these costs are astronomical. And starting two years ago with a rate study by RCAP and then we recently have had other rate studies done. We've looked at cost projections. We've looked at cash flow projections. We've looked at our balance sheet. And we've had a number of consultants give us recommendations for how we should move forward with a handful of different options that we could potentially embrace. I have not announced which of those we are going to embrace because we as a board have not decided yet. So as I think I made clear last time I was here, it's not that we have no idea. It's that we don't know which option is going to be the best option at this point in time. We know what we believe to be the best option, but I'm actually here today, Rob Platt, to help because he's going to talk about a specific property and a case summary here in the township to give you an idea of what we have done in other areas, what we have seen successful and what we would like to do in a township if the board of trustees is amenable. And if not, then we'll go down a different path. But at this point, Rob, if you want to share.
Good evening, trustees. It's good to be back in Enid Township. Ms. Brown, good to see you again. It's been a long time. Ms. Barry and Ms. Hanson, good to see you all as well. I do have a handout for you guys.
I know how to write a copy.
You do very well. So I serve, my name is Rob Platt. I serve as a consultant to Southwest Lake Community Water and Sewer District. And by and large, a lot of the things that I'm helping them with revolve around working, voting partnerships with communities to put things in place to help fund the district as it moves forward and as it serves the needs of the community as the community needs appropriate as you have made of that at its own, or in your pot plant and things that was, as Trustee Step referenced, the High Point project. Obviously, it will be a large project for Enid Township with a high demand. But what I'm focusing on here is I wanted to kind of go back to the discussion that we had, we being the district and the township. I apologize that I have my dates down near as well as Mr. Step does. But really, what we've done is looked, how can we partner with communities that the district serves and put revenue generating mechanisms in place that not only benefit that local government, there are ways to benefit the school district as well. And then if you so choose, fire and things like that as you extend it out. And then also the district is also a recipient of revenues to help cover costs associated with new development that comes in. So you all are aware that back in December of 2021, Enid put in a number of 10-year 75% TIPS. TIPS are, I believe I have that date right, but it stands for taxing from the finance and material, wherever that and the statutes that relate to that. That is a standard, was considered a standard 1075 tip. And really that, as I've looked through those agreements, albeit it's been a while, those revenues as they're generated from that, from that new development is shared between the township and the developer. And so there are a number of those that went into place. What I did is I kind of pulled out a case study or a case summary of one of those. And this is what I'm going to hand out to you and then kind of go through this and kind of talk through some different things that I see as opportunities for the township and the district to work together moving forward to help with the new development coming in.
Rob, this is the same one we were talking about last year, correct?
This is, yes, this is a similar project that, or the same project that the district, the school and township want. So what you have in front of you is the properties at just north of State Route 40 at 310, primarily on the east side of 310. The largest there being the Langle Farm, which you'll see in this. I guess I'll caveat this with a few things. First of all, a lot of these valuations were provided by the developer's attorney. And so we've simply run numbers off of existing millage rates and the effective rates. So you have, on there, you have four different colors. I color-coded them. So those out parcels there along 310 in the western part of the Langle Farm were, showed a valuation of $5 million. I believe they had those in four separate out parcels. The southern parcel, although not owned by the Langle, was included in this. So I made the assumption that the developer's looking to do something there as well. They call that the south parcel, 2.2 million in market value valuation. I did include the sheets because at the time, we did not have that, it was not built. And I did check the county others. That's not even a full valuation at this point right now. So I have to make the assumption that companies anywhere that want to will. And then the residential hotel valued at 19.8 million in improvements. And that was, I believe, 264 units, as I recall. And so we just put the similar, the same valuation on as the developer did. So what you have, after you work all that out, is a total assessed value of 10.675 million dollars. And so that would generate, again, based on existing millage, $587,877 in new taxes. The Langle property does sit in a, in the CAUV program. The other ones do not. So if you run a 75-25 split tip on it, which you have in place right now at 10 years, there would be $440,000 plus or minus that would go into a tip fund. 146,000, 147 almost that would go to the school district. One thing to point out, and I know you all are aware of this, I just want to remind you, when a property comes out of CAUV and is developed, then the recipients of those tax revenues do receive that bump up from what it was being assessed, the CAUV value up to the standard value. And then any increase above that is what the tip applies to. So I want to kind of take a step back on when you have a tip. It's, there's a couple, there's a lot of different ways you can do it, but there's a couple of different ways. And my example, I ran the schools receiving 25. It's kind of an assumption here that the schools would receive all of the 25% as opposed to 25% of what they actually otherwise would have received. So that's a larger amount that's, I don't know that that's in the agreement, but it certainly could be set that way. The schools, and in the schools reference, I do talk about the JBS being included in that. So the schools collectively received 62.5% of the property taxes. So if the tip was not in place with those development, development going down on those four properties, the schools would give about $360,000 in new money every year. We do have this recent study. It is from Home Builders Association. I got it from the BIA. It says, and I actually think my number is a little bit high. It's a point three students generated per unit. Obviously, that's based on how many, because it is determined by how many bedrooms are in these residential hotels. But given those numbers of those units, that would be 79 new students to the school district. So coming back around, you have this 10-year tip in place right now. And I did not look at what the split was between the township and the developer. What you have is, and then again, one more time, I just want to make this clear because as soon as somebody gets their calculator out and starts doing it, the numbers aren't going to match up because it depends on what you're looking at. Total school receipts of the 25% or just 25% of what the otherwise would have received. So if anybody ever wants to talk detailed about it, I'm happy to do so. But just know that when you look at these, there are variations in that and that's a reason for it. So with this current structure at full build out, over the 10 years, the tip then will generate a little over $4 million and that's what will be split. So the developer, and by and large, I'm talking about the people looking at the Langles, they have onsite improvements for every lease sewer that the district has talked about for a number of years that has to go through their inlet station and all that. To my understanding, that has been worked out. So what were, what the discussions were at least a year ago, I previously served on the Water and Sewer Board, so I'm sure you're aware of it. I was the district's appointee to have these discussions as well as Trustee Evans. We know the school district. So you have a 1075 tip in place, whereas the schools receive 75, I'm sorry, 25% of the increased property tax revenues as it's generated. The proposal from the district at that time was to increase that out to a 20-year tip with the same percentage structure. It really doesn't change the amounts going to, or going to the schools. It just extends it out for another 10 years. And then discussions with the developer, they were, were not, would not have an interest in seeking the years 11 through 20 receipts of the tip. And they were okay with the money going in some part to the Water and Sewer District to help it cover its costs. So that, we still think that that's a, something that should be looked at. What I think the, and this is what I told the Water and Sewer District, I also think that there's an opportunity being missed because historically, Enid Township has put jets in place when developers are looking for tax abatements and use that to help reimburse the schools for things that it's lost. My personal position is I think that a township, and I guess my professional position is a township should utilize a jet anytime there's commercial development, whether you're giving tax abatements or not. Because that's, that's new money from development that's coming into your township that you can share again with fire district, school district, water district, whoever it is. And to my knowledge, to date, Enid has not done so. So I think there's an opportunity there to extend new jets onto these properties, even though there are those tax abatements through the CRA program being sought. I also think that an NCA, I know that you have one in place. And my understanding, and even though I've not looked at the details, is some sort of, so many cents per square foot on property, on buildings that are abated. But again, I think that there's an opportunity there to create that on a millage base. I will tell you that, I guess, in a former life, in a former habit in Delaware County, there's about 12 NCA's that are in place. Not all of them, but a lot of them impose a 10 mil additional property tax charge, a community charge on development when it comes in, commercial development. And so that, a lot of times that money gets shared with the schools too. So there are ways to package things together to where it's beneficial to the township, the local government, the school district, other service providers such as fire, water and sewer, wherever you wanted to. And I think that those are things that we really should be looking at to try to help fund these things. And again, Trustee Step was talking about the cost increases. And really, there are things that are related to capital costs, right? But then you also have long-term maintenance costs and operations and things like that. So going back to something that the district has done in a recent partnership is what Union Township, Union is to the east of you, out on the other side of Kirkerville and the other side of Erickson Township. So that community is needing water and sewer extensions out around 40 and 37. So the district went to that board of trustees and said, hey, we're happy to extend services out there. There will be capital costs, there will be long-term maintenance costs associated with it. So they put in some tip structure similar to what you have in place now, kind of with a mindset of maybe we'll look at it again to a minute later, as well as a jet. And the Water and Sewer District is a recipient of those jet funds at a higher percentage rate until the debt is paid off for those capital improvements. But then in the long term, it's included, I believe, at 20% of the revenue. So for a long time, the district has operated off of assessments and user fees and things like that. There are ways that we really should be looking at collaboratively, I believe, that to put revenue generating mechanisms in place that help everybody to support the costs that they have for their operations. And certainly, Enid has the ability to do that should you wish to. So on my paper there, I have a proposed structure there in the middle. This is nothing set in concrete. This is just something I think that the two entities should get back together and have a discussion on restructuring of the existing tips out to that 20-year, which would, and again, you can't double the numbers because there's, you've got a lot for build-out time and things like that. So okay, about eight and a half million collected there into the tip fund, the creation of a jet. I ran very conservative numbers on a 2% income tax of what could go in there in that area. So you're looking at a little over $150,000 annually that could come in. And if you put an eight mil NCA on that, you'd be at about $85 a year. So there are things, again, that could be put in place if the two entities were to work together to do this. The next steps, the school district, the Water and Sewer District and the township would need to get back together. Again, those meetings were held initially. The meetings have not been held at least in the year that I can think of, but I'm sure longer. So the district would like to reconvene those. But really what it boils down to, a lot of those things take unanimous vote of the board of trustees to put those in place. And certainly, there's no interest in wasting any bite to anybody's time, right? So if there's an interest in revisiting those discussions, the district has expressed an interest in doing so. I don't know that there's any way, when you have development like that, to make a school district or a fire district or whoever's providing the service whole, at least in the near term, but you can get close. but you can get close, as you do in the long term. So your jet, you're talking a ten, twenty, thirty-year TIF, your NCA's are perpetually, or jets are normally fifty, seventy-five, even ninety-nine years, I've not seen a hundred-year jet. But there are ways to, to then, in the long term, provide funding for service providers over the long term, even though upfront, you have to redirect some of the new revenue through the TIF mechanism. So tests are not always a, a popular thing, and I get that. They are put in place in Iowa law for public infrastructure improvements, that's, that's why they exist. You guys are being townships, fifty, seventy-nine, seventy-three, to seventy-five, are the laws that you fall, fall under, if anybody wishes to read that. But that's, it's explicitly for that, is for public infrastructure improvements. I will add a caveat out there, there was a recent law change that kind of opens it up for what townships can use your TIF money for. So I encourage that, the Agribusiness Council, look at that. Finally, the sewer district has, because it has built partnerships, not only with Union Township, it is, where I would say it's fair, fair to say that we're in final discussions with the builder of Kirkersville for water service with them, with a similar type of structure. So this is not a new concept, where the district has partnered with local governments to work together. Part of that partnership has been where the district has led those efforts on behalf of, of everybody. So creation costs, there are always legal fees and things like that, the district offered that to Union Township. In the Kirkersville example, all costs associated with that project are, are being wrapped, in, back into the project as reimbursable costs or creation costs. So a, a similar structure could be done here, if you wanted to, to where Edna's not out a, a dollar to, to put these things into place, so long as there is a working partnership to reimburse the district here for the long haul. So that, that was kind of the thought of, of really, again, it's, this is not, this is not set in stone, these are, these are just ideas. Really, what I wanted to, to bring to you is, there are options here, there are, Edna certainly has property that you've already zoned, that you expect new development to come in, that the district is trying to serve, and you have opportunities here. The district does not control what uses are where and all that kind of stuff. That all is retained with local control of the district, then, that does serve those. So it has an interest in working with the local government to put those things in place to generate revenue to, to cover those costs. So I, really, that's all I'm, I just wanted to share that. All I really wanted to take from this, or at least the district, that I can share back with the district, but, you know, interesting stuff is here, so he'll hear as well. But is there an interest in reconvening those meetings? And if not, if it's, hey, we don't have any interest in doing these, jets, TIFs, NCA's, or working with the water district or anything, that, that lets me know, right, so I don't waste time, but that would be appreciated. But, oh, no, I don't have any answering questions. Again, this is fluid, these are just some ideas.
I've got a couple of questions for you. Regarding the needs of Edna, I've asked the district for almost a year now, what the current needs are of the township, the High Point, and the ones that are approved, and then overall, based on our zoning, what's the future needs? Has that been determined?
I, I don't know, I don't, I don't have that information.
High Point, what's the needs for High Point? Both, both individuals mentioned them, so I'm sure you have that figure.
So we, we didn't zone in, in High Point, so the development at High Point was at the township development. So the, the needs in those capacities are all in the documentation that Mr. Santino presented to the township. That's part of the review process that the township has to go through and approve the final development plan. And that's all being reviewed in the Licking County planning right now. We could probably give you estimates.
That's what I'm looking for.
Of what we believe they are, and I've provided those to these, to this board before.
If, if you could resend those, because I, I know at one of the meetings, I think it was for the CAC, you referenced the apartment usage and stuff, when you said, well, I can't share that, right? I, I'm concerned that it's not being shared, what those estimates are. You're talking about going from one point five million to two, to two point five, and our, our township's needs can be served, not only with these that are already approved, but our future, where the district is expanding north quite a bit, and are we going to be needing to?
Not in that sewer shed, sir.
Okay, but?
This is Edna Township and the Tascal that we're talking about.
So, so sewer's not going outside, go, no sewers going?
Not to the lager, not to that sewer shed, that's.
I don't know, but in the district is what I'm saying. Because I, I know, isn't Alexandria, you guys were proposing?
We, we have purchased property, which I've reported to this group, to build the Raccoon Creek Water Treatment Facility in the one sixty-one corridor, to service that at some point in the future, when the development demands indicate that that would be necessary. There is no anticipated flow coming to Wybrow from the, the north, from one sixty-one.
Okay, but as far as estimates?
At the township.
Okay, but as far as estimates, I'm sure you guys have estimates of the Drayton Hall, which some people are calling Langwell's, you know, Drayton Hall, or High Point, where you have those estimates for the needs, and I think those should be shared, so that we can see.
So, so, again, those are part of the development process in the township. We would enter into a development agreement at such point as they want to sign an agreement for the capacity. That would be where our process would take over. But we're doing the best we can to estimate based on what's happening in the township, what's happening in Harrison Township, what's happening in City of Tascal. We're not brought to the table during any of that zoning process.
Correct, but you said?
We have no idea what's in the pipe.
Right, but you said right now, your investments, and that's what I'm looking for, which hasn't been provided. So if you could, please email that, I'd appreciate it.
I can give you what I know, but I can tell you that the place to look for that is truly, is the Licking County Planning Commission. Because that's where all those drawings and all that approval is, that's where it's all at right now. And that could change before it gets to us, it's all in preliminary planning.
But then how are you determining your capacity needs, if going from one point five to two point five? If, if you don't, if you're at, you're basing it on something, that's what I wanted to see, what you're basing it on.
It takes years to build that capacity. So, yeah, we're, we're trying to create estimates to determine what capacity we need to service the needs of this community going forward. This community is building that backlog and pushing that pipeline at a continued pace, so it's, it's a moving target.
Right, but whatever estimates you have, I, I appreciate that. And then question on the proposal, it, it's very similar to when the top, talks stopped back in April, we're trying to move forward. There's no talk in capital recovery fees, capacity fee increases and stuff like that. I know there's reluctance to do that, to not put that solely on the back of the developers, but I think that should be there first, and then you would get other options. Why isn't that being considered?
It is being considered, it's not, that's not part of that preferred process. What we present tonight is what we prefer as a Water and Sewer District. It's not necessarily the only option, it's one of four or five options we're considering. The reason I disagree with a capital recovery fee as described is what you're doing is you're trying to front-load eighty million dollars worth of construction, which should be, or could be paid over a longer period of time. My personal preference would be for that to be paid by the end-users over a period of time, as opposed to front-loaded to the developers, pricing them potentially out of, out, out of being able to develop in the community. So my goal would be that the future users who use the Water and Sewer would be paying an income tax, or be paying some sort. There would be other revenues that would be generated. As part of that revenue generation, we would be able to pay the net service over a longer period of time, as opposed to trying to front-load it. And then there's a combination of the two or three that we could eventually do, if a TIF, jet, NCA, CRA, any of the other types of, the, the economic development incentives that are in place by the state. At any point in time, if we were to be able to see that one of those wasn't going to cover the costs, then we would impose a portion of a different solution to make sure that it's, it's paid in its entirety. But the goal is that no existing customer pays anything additional for any of this new capacity. Because quite frankly, as a customer, I've already paid for my capacity.
Well, when you, when you say that, I'm concerned, because, and that's the point I raised with Rob Platt before, the school district was also concerned, the two properties at that time, the school, the revenue diverted away from the school is three point two million over ten years, you wanted to double that to six point four. That, that's, when you say that you don't want residents or customers to pay any more money, when the schools need to expand it, and they're gonna need to expand, they're gonna need that revenue. And if you take it away from them, they're gonna have to go to liens and bonds. So the, the residents are paying for it indirectly, and I'm concerned that there's no talk of even a, a reduced capital recovery fee or, or that part of it to put direct costs on the developers and not just shift costs to the residents.
To the future residents.
All residents with the levies and bonds that the schools are going to need to do, if they, if they don't get the surplus revenue.
The ones that you have on your desk does not take money away from those schools.
The, it does, because the money has to come from somewhere, and it's coming from the real estate taxes that would have come at schools.
I, I think there's, let me try to clarify there. A TIF captures new revenue from development, revenue that nobody has seized, nobody has, until the development comes. So all, a TIF redirects a portion, all, none, or a portion of those new taxes to help pay for infrastructure that make those projects possible. So in a commercial TIF, which is what we're talking about here, which is what you guys have in place, I don't think of residential, there is an increase in revenues to the school district. Yes, it's not one hundred percent of the increase that they otherwise would have received. But there is an increase to the schools, and there's no student generation when you have straight commercial development. Now, the Langwell, the Langwell project is an outlier, and so the district is, then kind of furthers that discussion and says, well, that's why you should be utilizing jets on commercial property, because you can help fund those schools in the long haul, not just in that ten or twenty or thirty-year TIF upfront. So, so that, if a, if a TIF is being utilized to help make a project possible, or put capacity into a system, or something like that, then nobody's getting any money if the project didn't happen. But the schools do see a benefit in any kind of, if, if there's a seventy-five percent to fifty, seventy, whatever the, whatever the split is. And generally, when there's commercial retail, there's no additional student generation. So redirecting a portion of the increase for a short period of time to help a project become possible, a commercial project, that will generate money over the long haul, is, is a good investment. So that's the approach that the district is taking. It's not accurate to say that the schools aren't getting any money, or it's not taking money from the schools. You really can't take anything that you don't have, that doesn't exist. So, and I, I thought I would point out, to be fair, and I did put this in your sheet, and I did say this, when a property comes out of CAUV, there is an increase for the school district right off the bat, before they even go vertical with the building. So there is a way, like I said, for the local government entities, such as Edna in this case, such as the district, has done with other partnerships, to work with the district, to work with the school district, to help everybody fund their projects and their revenue needs. The question really becomes, is there an interest to do so collectively? And again, it's fluid, there's a lot of things that could change and stuff, this is just one of many scenarios. But the district's happy to leave that, and certainly, I know that he's sending me to a meeting, so I'm happy to do so as well. But if, if we can come away with some sort of consensus or idea, I'm not asking for any action or anything from the trustees. But if we had an idea of that, then I think that, you know, we'd be willing to do so.
I got, I have one other question. The developers right now, you said you weren't sure about the percentage, but right now, the, the TIF revenue going back to the developers ranges from seventy-five percent to ninety percent. Are they renegotiating that part and giving that part to the, the water district?
So I understand your question, the existing ten-seventy-five TIF that Edna put in place December twenty-one, those revenues have already been designated, designated between the township and developers, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
We have not, I said that earlier, that we, we are looking at any collections from year eleven on. So if we went to a twenty-year TIF, the district would receive revenues in years eleven and twenty. We've not gone back to the developers, so they, you know, give us any of that or anything like that.
And are you still proposing, because when we talked, the township was receiving the other twenty-five to ten percent. There, you proposed going to twenty percent, and the water district getting everything. Is that still the proposal, that the township gave up their portion of that TIF?
I don't know where the, where you're getting the twenty percent, that was never discussed.
The twenty-year, oh.
Okay, so in a twenty-year TIF structure, again, this is not set in concrete, this is just a, a concept. The additional TIF revenue generated in the years eleven through twenty, that seventy-five percent that would go into the TIF fund would go solely to the water district for other, its other operations, its other improvements. In this case, Wybrow, whatever other improvements. It's, it's the same thing, again, that they've done in, in Union and, and talking about with the Alcoa.
Well, we met before, you wanted all that revenue, the township to give up that, that small percentage through that. So you're saying you still want to do that.
Okay, let me, let me start again.
For ten, for ten years, the township would get fif, twenty-five to, ten, ten to twenty-five percent of the TIF revenue, because the developers are getting seventy-five to ninety. Your proposal last year was that all of it goes to the water.
I think, I think you're confused a lot. Years, the, the years one through ten of the TIF structure that is in place now is set. Twenty-five percent of the new revenue, the new property tax revenue is going to be distributed however, whatever was set, as far as the property tax. Seventy-five percent of the TIF is set in stone, however, Edna Township did that with the split between the developer and the township. What the district proposed was an extension from, you can go to thirty years, we'd go to twenty years, and then years eleven through, there's a reason for that, eleven through twenty. And seventy, that seventy-five percent captured into that TIF fund that the fiscal officer would keep would annually go to Southwest Licking for its.
Okay, so you changed it a little bit, you left the township's revenue in the first ten years, and then?
That's, that's what I said, the, the TIF, as proposed, it does not change in years one through ten. We're, what we're talking about is an extension, an amendment to it in years for, years eleven through twenty. You still distribute the twenty-five percent to whoever the recipients are normally. And then the seventy-five percent that goes, collected into a TIF fund, you have to create, the fiscal officer has to create a TIF fund. When those revenues come in, for the amounts that apply to the first ten years, that's divided out of your agreement sets. But years eleven through twenty would be dedicated to the south.
Right, but originally, you wanted that township portion of the first ten years, that's all I'm saying. So now that's changed, I just wanted to make sure I, I was clear on that, thanks.
Okay. I'd have any other questions? Yeah, again, we're not looking for action, we're just, some sort of nod, some sort of feedback. If you could let the district know, I guess, relatively soon, you know, then we're happy to start reconvening those. And it'd probably be worth getting the developers involved as well, so if he does, it doesn't affect me also.
I would think if we're going to discuss it, we want to be executive session, make a decision, kind of talk about it.
Yeah, I think ultimately, you'd have to, I think it would be, it probably makes sense to just have a representative of each meeting, and, and try to work through the, the basics of it, and then bring it back to the boards for their further discussion.
Members, I have a question.
Yes, thank you.
So I just want to make sure, I think what I heard you say was that the, the goal of the various options that you have presented is that the people who, the people or entities who will benefit from the actual water and sewer services will be the ones to pay for them, as opposed to, like, the legacy members or, or other people.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, and that's a, that's a great point. That's, and maybe, I, I guess I, sorry, I just take for, a few things for granted. But a jet only applies, and we'll take that as, as an example, to the workers and the businesses in the, in the jet area, right? So you create a map, you guys have a number of them, but that is not a tax paid by your residents. So that's new businesses coming in, so you're capturing new revenue from development that's coming into your township. Likewise, an NCA doesn't say a thing, right? So different than the NCA, NCA structure you have now, most NCA's are structured such that the community charges an additional millage. So that, that would only apply to the new development coming in. So you're, you're basically taking the position that, hey, if we're gonna have new development in our, in our township, then we're gonna put things in place to generate new revenues, you know, to, to be able to fund different services, right? So that's really what that is. And a TIF isn't much different, it's, it's captured. And, and a TIF isn't much different, it's, it's capturing new property tax increases that, you know, if a field is in CAUV, it might, a hundred acres might be generating five hundred dollars a year or something in property tax or a thousand dollars, you know, or something like that. Whereas you get up into tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars every year in property tax once it develops. So, uh, no, you're exactly right, it's a great point. It's, what we're really talking about is generating revenue from new development. It is not anything passed on to your residents. And it can be used however you, you guys see fit or ours, uh, agreed with everybody. And really, that's what we're asking for, is the ability to sit back down with the partners, in, in this case, with the township and the school district.
Next one, a question. Did, did I understand you to say that the, the cost associated with creation or formation of whatever option is ultimately determined, that that is not gonna be money that the township is gonna bear? That that is gonna be an expense that will be at least initially borne by the central water district with the opportunity to recoup that?
Yeah, absolutely, the, the, just generally, the district is, is, is called those creation costs, right? So anytime you have, you have local fees, you have install fees, you have planners and then this engineering design, all those kinds of things. Um, what the district has proposed, when a community wants to, wants to partner with us, such as what they've already done, is, uh, the district then will, will cover those costs with the explicit understanding that, uh, the district will be made whole of those as the revenues start generating. So you simply wrap them in as project costs and as concreation costs, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your time early, and I'm happy to have any follow-up or, or discussions. Is there anything else you want? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will be turning the meeting over to our administrator, Ms. Nina Hansen, for her report.
Thank you, may I go to the podium?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hopefully for anybody who is watching online, they will notice an improvement in the streaming. Um, Spectrum is having issues in our area, issues that are impacting, um, Town Hall. And so I was able to, uh, actually use a mobile hotspot and connect to that. And so I think that is making our streaming better. But if for some reason we had continuing issues with the buffering that we've had in the last couple of weeks, then we'll just upload the actual recording of the meeting, but I think that is probably better. So that's a couple of things to talk about from a community news kind of standpoint. October the tenth, which is one week away, is the last day to register to vote in the November seventh election. Early in-person voting begins October eleventh and includes the Saturday and Sunday before Election Day. Absentee voting by mail also begins on October eleventh. The, the envelope must be postmarked by November the sixth. And of course, Election Day is November seventh, then the polls will be open from six thirty AM to seven thirty PM. We've had some information out on our website about some ODOT work that's gonna be done at three ten and forty. Um, right now, it's projected to begin at nine PM on Fri, on this Friday, October the sixth, and will go until five AM on Saturday, October the seventh. ODOT will be doing work in the middle of the intersection. The message boards will be placed directing warehouse traffic to use State Route one fifty-eight to forty. At the intersection of three ten and forty, there'll be one through lane maintained and the return lanes will be allowed in all four directions. There'll be three deputies with patrol cars on site along with the contractor's personnel to maintain traffic. So watch our website and watch the message board outside um, if there's any updates on any further delays on, on that project. But right now, it's scheduled to begin Friday, uh, at nine PM. There will be a meeting on October eleventh beginning at six thirty PM to meet the candidates for the one open Etna Township trustee seat. The meeting will be held at Watkins Memorial High School. I've sought, but I do not yet have any information about the format of that meeting. But put it on your calendars for October the eleventh beginning at six thirty PM. The federal government is conducting a nationwide test on the National Wireless Emergency Alert System tomorrow. Starting at two twenty PM, all cell towers will broadcast the emergency alert. Anyone with a cell phone within the range of a tower should receive the alert, which will read, "This is a test of the National Wireless Emergency Alert System, no action is necessary." The message will be accompanied by a unique tone and vibration. At the same time, the government will also test the more traditional emergency alert system that is broadcast on radio and TV. Um, there was a jacket left here in Town Hall after the BCA meeting. I have it here, so if you know who it belongs to, tell them that we have it here and we're keeping it safe. Uh, I was asked at the last meeting, or we were asked at the last meeting about a breakdown for Community Night. Um, and so I wanted to give that breakdown, it's really kind of impressive and exciting, actually. The township paid fifteen thousand dollars for the fireworks, which was offset by money donations totaling three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, leaving a net cost of eleven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. The township paid nine hundred dollars for the band, which was completely offset by a donation from Sheets. So zero net cost on the band. There was no cost for the shopping bags, which were an in-kind donation by Uline. The township paid three hundred dollars to have the bags imprinted with the township logo. That was completely offset by a donation from Sheets. So again, zero net cost. There was no cost for the picnic tables, which were an in-kind donation by Uline. There was no cost for the bottles of water, which were donated by Sheets. Cumberland Trails refrigerated the water and kept it cold during the entire event. Um, we need to order new tires for the Mollorax. The total estimated cost for purchase and installation of two tires is two thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty cents. I gave you the, um, estimate of that. Um, I'm requesting authority up to twenty-five hundred dollars for this purchase and installation in the event that there are issues once the installation begins. So you don't know if any of the trustees.
Almost, almost, uh, up to twenty-five hundred dollars for tire replacement?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Is that only for two tires?
It is.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, from a zoning perspective, there were nineteen zoning permits issued in the month of September for a total of six thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. Forty-eight violations have been mailed to date, with five violations remaining open. The zoning commission met on September sixth for a public hearing on text amendments in Article ten and Article two of the zoning resolution. The non-mine recommendation from, um, the, from the Leaking County Planning Commission was to approve with the conditions. The zoning commission took the LCPC conditions into account in making their final decision before making their recommendation to the Board of Trustees. At that meeting, the zoning commission moved to recommend to the Board of Trustees to approve the text amendment AM twenty-three, O two, for Article two definitions and Article ten supplementary district regulations submitted by the Leaking County Planning Commission with modifications. The approval by this board will require a public hearing with notice published in the appropriate paper at least ten days prior to the hearing. We'll begin that process as it is established by Ohio revise code to ensure that there's appropriate publication before your next meeting. The zoning commission meeting, uh, the next zoning commission meeting is going to occur October the tenth and they'll start work back, start back to work on the NAICS code amendments. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on September twenty-fifth for three evidentiary hearings. Hearing one was a request for an accessory structure twenty square feet over the limitations. The variance was approved. Hearing two was a request for conditional use for freestanding ground-mounted single-site residential public solar panels. That conditional use was approved. And then the third hearing was a request for a conditional use for a tow company impound storage and parking lot in an M one district. The conditional use was denied. The property owner also requested a variance from section eleven oh three paving. That variance was also denied. It seemed to me like there were people who, like me, did not really understand the process as it relates to the application filed by the tow company. The property on Main Street is zoned M one and would conditionally permit a tow yard at that location based on the M one zoning. Conditionally means that an application is required to request that specific purpose at that specific location. The township must receive an application when the use is conditionally permitted at any particular location. We're not permitted to, we're not allowed to reject it if what is being asked is a conditionally permitted use. The township did not support the application, but rather indicated certain requirements of the conditional use, which did not meet the requirements of section five twenty-two of the zoning resolution, should the BCA vote to approve the application. Of course, in this instance, the application was denied. It was helpful to me to just have an explanation about how does this process work and why it happened the way that it did. Um, an update on Skeneau, which I don't think I recorded on Skeneau for maybe, maybe sixty days, maybe forty-five days. Skeneau reports that it's still working to obtain approval from an adjacent landowner to access that property during the installation of the Camel ditch pipe. The materials for that ditch have been ordered. Currently, delivery is expected the week of November sixth. Skeneau is trying to get that date moved up, but it is dependent on the supply chain. The grades on both sides of the sound wall have been regraded to address standing water that was noted by the county. There's not much discussion about the wall, which is a sound wall, it is not a light barrier wall. The wall was constructed in compliance with the final development plan that was approved by the, the Board of Trustees in twenty twenty-one. Not this board, the prior board. There have been a number of discussions with Skeneau about addressing the neighbor complaints related to light intrusions. This is a civil issue between the property owners and Skeneau. There's no action that the township can take to change what is currently in existence. Um, if you need anything from a township, please reach out to me at any time, I'm available and I put a stack of my business cards on the table, so if you don't have one, please feel free to get one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we move over into the new business, um, resolution twenty-three, one zero zero three, this will be zero one, or zero zero? One. Resolution to reduce the load limits on the following streets in Etna Township, Leaking County, Ohio, as presented. Which we all got. So I'm making a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
There haven't been any added or taken off since last year, has there? Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes.
I move to, um, move the October seventeenth meeting to October twenty-fourth and to cancel the November seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A discussion, please?
Why?
Well, do you want me?
Yes, please.
So the, the thought process was that the November seventh meeting is on Election Day. Um, I will not be available on Election Day because I serve as a precinct election official. Um, that's not necessarily catastrophic, obviously, to the process, but it would seem to be considerate of our residents if we don't hold a meeting on the same day that they might be trying to get to the polls. October has five Tuesdays, and so by making this adjustment, um, it basically makes three weeks between each of the next meetings. So it's spaced out nicely. It, um, alleviates any issue with Election Day. Um, and we have enough Tuesdays in October to make it happen nicely.
I know last election, we had a meeting, Election Day, it was fine. But I'm concerned that, again, we're, we're canceling and changing meetings, making special meetings which limit the public's opportunity to speak on a variety of topics because they're limited to only that which is on the agenda. Uh, it, I, I think we should stay consistent with our meetings, two meetings a month. And, uh, everybody's well aware of those, we set those at the beginning of the year, and I don't think we should be changing them. Um, I, I, again, just for the consistency, but also to keep the ability for the public to comment on anything. I wanna hear their voices, so.
We have actually four candidate that's running for Township trustee in the room tonight. And, um, I feel because that's, four, the four is quite a bit, that they are running and I think we can make up for that meeting. So I would like to see us cancel the meeting, um, and just re, um, we have the meeting on a different date.
Don't talk about it on Election Day.
Excuse me. Yes, go ahead, please.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, I, can you, please? Thank you. Okay, so we're, um, we're going to move over to O business, please. Resolution twenty-three, one zero zero three, O two, resolution to retain attorney Christina Corl. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, I'll ask for our attorney that's here, who's representing the township, Ms. Julie Donlin, please.
Julie Donlin.
Yes, ma'am, please, thank you.
Good evening, trustees, as well as Sir Berrien, as well as Ms. Hanson. Um, the resolution in front of you, welcome to give some background.
Yes.
Um, the board at your last meeting, I believe, authorized trustee McKee um, to seek a third-party investigator in regards to a personnel complaint. Um, your, um, uh, employee handbook provides that when this type of complaint comes in, that an investigation be held. Um, and, and the, um, and in this type of situation, it's not uncommon for a third party to come in to conduct an independent investigation. Um, attorney Christina Corl, she's at the law firm, Plunkett Clooney. Um, she has conducted employment investigations, um, for decades at this point. She represents, uh, she does investigations for Ohio State University. She also does, uh, um, investigations for other townships in Central Ohio, that type of thing. Um, she, so, so if the board moves forward with this resolution, it would be to authorize her to conduct an investigation, um, in, into a personnel matter. In terms of what that process would look like, um, she would meet with and schedule interviews with, um, township employees and township officials, that type of thing. And, um, and her investigation would be focused on whether any township policies and procedures have been violated. That's item one, and then item two, if any provisions of Ohio or federal law have been violated. That's kind of the summary, that's what, again, if the board moves forward, that's what the process in general would look like. that's what the process in general would look like. Um, the other point of note in the, the resolution, um, the, um, be- because employees and officials may be interviewed, uh, and she is a third-party independent investigator, it, she has also requ- it's not uncommon, and she has requested, um, that, uh, basically a point of contact be appointed, um, and the resolution in front of you appoints our office as the point of contact with the investigator in case she has a, an administrative question, that type of thing. Um, but just wanted to at least, uh, mention that to you, and that's kind of the, the general summary of that information.
I've got a question on that. Why isn't that the prosecutor? County prosecutors put in contact because they are our attorney, and there's additional costs with you as outside counsel.
So the board certainly could, um, to, I don't know if that discussion has been had with the prosecutor's office, they certainly could serve as a point of contact. Um, but again, our office was, um, was consulted, we were, um, and that's why we've, we've been, or that's why we're in the resolution.
My, my concerns is just increasing fees of going outside counsel when, again, the prosecutor is going to be called on to him.
Well, we also have that, but, uh, we, we, uh, higher, um, grid's office to, um, look into the, um, alleged allegations. And we passed that, so here we are, allowing her, her to, um, farm, since they're representing the board, they would pass it along to an investigator, so, um, which makes sense.
Yep, I was going to say that.
Yeah.
She's whispering.
No, I'm not whispering. I'm sorry. I'm not speaking loud enough, I'm sorry.
So again, the, at the end of the day, I've been raising our names, and the resolution is because we, we've helped in terms of, um, of, uh, presenting the board with a, a possible third-party investigator. Obviously, I do not know, I can't, up, standing up here today, I can't tell you if the prosecutor's office would be willing to serve as the point of contact. Obviously, they're, they're statutory, uh, legal counsel, we're special counsel. Um, again, if, if the board is stopped, if, if the prosecutor's office is willing to, um, serve in that role, then it, it certainly, um, but just can't tell you standing here today.
I'm just concerned about increasing fees because we've, we've been paying more and more for things that the prosecutor can handle and just go into the outside counsel.
Roll call, Ms. Barry.
Well, I've got my discussion, I thought she was doing that. But, uh, I just think this is continued weaponiz- weaponization of outside counsel for political purposes on the township's side.
Oh, really?
That's all I have to say.
Roll call, Ms. Barry.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, I'll turn, you know, to our fiscal officer. Want to do a report?
I don't really have any.
Okay, okay. I move Resolution 23091803 to approve the purchase orders as presented. Is there a second?
Wait, you have an option?
230918?
It should be 10.
It should be 10, okay. Sorry. I have a typo on there.
Maybe 100303.
Yeah.
I'll second. One, one question I have on purchase orders, I said, see-
Thank you.
See the, uh, full amount of the Town Hall security system still nearly 11,000?
Okay, so we're in the middle of discussing, um, this right now, Mr. Evans, you're, you're out of order right now, so we're, we're going to roll call now, please, Ms. Barry?
I'm discussing the resolutions, so I'm not sure what you're talking about. That's a purchase order on this resolution.
The 11,000 is the drop.
The, oh, it's near, near 11,000, it's 10,819 for the Town Hall security system. Are they taking out all the wiring and all the cameras and replacing everything that, I think it was $10,000 that, the majority of the work was running all the wires, running all the cameras. I, I thought it was only removing these three cameras in the hall and a new DVR. Why are we spending 11,000 still?
Oh, the, the contract with State Security was approved by the board some time ago, and that, as I understand it, is for the exterior cameras-
Yeah.
-to be installed.
Mm-hmm.
But the, I mean, the contract was, has been previously approved for that, for that total amount of the 10,819.
Mm-hmm. Roll call, Ms. Barry.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to approve the purchase of the cracked ceiling from D, D J L for a total of $4,218.75. Is there a second?
Uh, second, let's-
Okay, discussion, you should have it there, uh, the D J L.
What, was this already purchased, Bubba?
Yeah, there was a material for the-
So why are we approving it here?
Yeah.
It's probably a cracked ceiling. So, Ms. Varian said that we needed a motion to approve the purchase because the purchase combined with the credit card purchases had exceeded the prior, um, threshold for spending, and so this required a separate motion to approve this expenditure for the actual cracked ceiling material. If I explain it correctly?
Yes. Thank you.
No, I was, I, I had raised that point, um, why are we exceeding those amounts? I'm sure if we do something so that we don't, if we have standard things every year that it's around $5,000 for cracked ceiling, so much for repairs, give that part the authorization, and the other 2,500 is used for unusual items.
We talked, we talked about that, and we also talked about, like, the diesel purchases as well. The diesel has a separate purchase order. We talked about that, about the cracked ceiling, and if there'd be any more for the rest of the year, that I could create a purchase order, and, um, he said that was going to be the last purchase of the year. So for this year, um, that's the last purchase for cracked ceiling.
So certainly, as Ms. Varian and I have been working on the budget, that's an item that perhaps should be addressed to be a, a, a budget item with a purchase order for the future. But for today's purposes, it is going to require an auction for the expenditure.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to ratify the payment for the bill as shown on the payment listing. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
The Maverick Motors, that's for the cruisers.
Mm-hmm.
Cruiser repair. I don't think we have any authorization that allows, and that's another thing I think we should have, that you have a set amount, and because just having expenses then approving them afterwards, I don't think it's just good policy.
Roll call, Ms. Barry.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. So I will move over into the announcements and trustee comments. Please limit to three minutes.
Uh, the only thing I'd like to say is, uh, again, I, I think he stepped out, uh, we have, uh, Bill Bogans here from Liberty Township, uh, he went forward with the process after he saw the article about, uh, our, our process of exclusionary zone, and, um, has that set for a public hearing on November 8th at 6:00 p.m. at the Lick County Administrative Building, uh, regarding Liberty Township's exclusionary zone. Um, so contrary to what was said, the commissioners were willing to take it up. Uh, I, I hope that as a township, we follow in their footsteps to protect our residents and in this township, um, in that regard. So I would encourage everybody, uh, it's a public meeting, um, public hearing that you, you can attend, uh, so please do so.
Yeah, um, I sit on the West Lincoln Fire Board. You notice, divided some stakes and stuff up around the, the condominiums, pool up near the corner, Colombian refugee, um, plans are being made down to make that into their firehouse. The pool will be taken out, days are put in there with them, firefighters will use the house that's currently at the clubhouse as their quarters and meeting rooms and so forth. So, um, that project's ongoing in the township here, that's in the township. The other project that's going on in the township is over off of Taylor Road, we're in the process of going to a station. It is a big station, it's a much-needed station. We were in a little storefront for a long time over there, so, um, working with Roethlisberger to make that happen, but it isn't, that's another one that's in, at the township, is the township too. Uh, this would give us three, um, stations within the township, and it should reduce our response time within the township. And all these are completed there, put into hotspots, so, uh, a lot of good things happening with that.
Um, I would like to make some comments tonight regarding Mr. Gary Burkholder, who is a candidate for Etna Township trustee, Mark Evans current as a trustee. We received many calls from residents about Mr. Burkholder's previous tenure with the Etna Township trustee from 2004 to 2007. So that residents have the information to act in their own interest, and so that we do not have to get overwhelmed with public records requests. Here's what you should do. You can go onto our website, record, um, from March 2005 to 2007 online, the minutes are there. You can view them directly from our website. Prior to 2005, you would have to come into the Etna Township Hall to view the minutes, and you can pay for copies, they are required, it's 10 cents per copy. In addition, we have received many inquiries about Mr. Burkholder's status with the township, and whether he is employed by the township. By the way of background, although Mark Evans was elected by the residents of the township to do a job, he went out and bravely hired Mr. Burkholder as his personal unpaid consultant. Mr. Evans admitted in his email, you can request a copy of this email through a public records request from our administrator, Ms. Nita Hanson. Moreover, our attorney, Peter Griggs, prepared a letter on the board's behalf to various public entities within the county that set, that was set the record straight. It is stated, Mr. Burkholder is not an agent of his township. As previously stated, this letter was necessary because Mr. Burkholder was going around the township claiming he was working for Mr. Evans. Again, if you would like to request a copy of this letter through the public records request, contact our administrator, Ms. Nita Hanson. Thank you.
That is shameful.
Well, we're trying to slow down, we're getting a lot of calls, a lot of calls, and it's becoming overwhelming for Ms. Hanson, she has a lot of other things she's trying to do, and Mrs. Brown as well, so we're just trying to slow the process down, uh, public records requests.
That's one records request they might fulfill.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Roll call, Ms. Varian?
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Sorry, second.
Your second.
Second, yes. Roll call, Ms. Varian?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
And Mark was dead. He was dead.